Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Let's just call the roll.
Councilmember Cousins?
Here.
Councilmember Fisher?
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember?
Here.
Councilmember Michelle's?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Tal?
Present.
Mayor Keel?
Here.
We have two sets of meeting minutes to approve this evening. One from our regular city council meeting on May 14th and the second from our city council work session, which is budget review session number two on May 6th. I'm going to go ahead and move by Smith. Thank you.
Second.
Second by Knight. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, any comments?
No. I do not.
Ms. Knight?
No.
Anyone else on council? Seeing none, all in favor of approving full sets of meeting minutes, if I can say a "aye" please?
Aye.
Close the post. Thank you. We have no prearranged participation this evening, so we're down to approval of the agenda. I don't think there's anything new on the table.
Second by Fisher.
Second by Cousins. Thank you both. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the agenda, so if I can say a "aye" please?
Aye.
Close the post. Very good. We have no public hearings this evening, so we're down to non-arranged participation. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak, please stand up and introduce yourself. Name an address, please, if you would, and welcome.
My name is Jason Machieski. I live at 8983 Starfield Court in Dexter Township. Thank you for the opportunity this evening. I am here to introduce myself. I'm running for county commissioner, District One, which covers not only the city of Dexter, but the townships of Linden, Dexter Township, Lima Township, Sylvan Township, Siobhan Township, and the city of Dexter. Hundred eighty-five square miles, which I'm getting to know pretty well. Again, I just wanted to introduce myself to you this evening as a candidate. I commend Councilman Tal on your remarks yesterday.
Well, thank you.
Very well done.
Boy, look at you.
Besides, I mentioned, I live on Starfield Court, just the other side of the railroad tracks there in Dexter Township with my wife Molly, who was a former member of your planning commission, and my three kids, one of which is a graduate of Dexter High School at Michigan State right now, and my other two kids are in the Chelsea School system. Some of you may know that I served on the Dexter Township Board for eight years, being elected in 2008 and 2012, serving there. One of the, I think, major accomplishments that we had was building the fire station out on Old Territorial Road, which I was a strong supporter of, as well as my work at the Western Washington Recycling Authority, of which I'm the chair of the board for about the past two and a half years now. But I've been on the Western Washington Board for ten years total, and we've really brought it to a situation now where we're replacing equipment that is quite old at this point. We've got our fund balance up over the last couple of years to nearly $700,000 that enables us to do equipment replacement and some improvements to our facility, recycling more material than ever. So I'm quite proud of the work that I've been able to do there as well. But again, hopefully I will see you out and about this, over the next couple of months as I'm out knocking doors and at events. I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody might have this evening. I do apologize, we have to skip out soon because I have another meeting to be at in about a half an hour, but hopefully I will get a chance to talk to you, to anybody that has any questions. You can always look me up on the Internet, just Google my name and my website, and we'll come up with all my contact information.
You're the chair of the Washington?
Western Washington Recycling Authority.
Do you have like a, I'm always concerned about the e-waste in my house. I got TVs, microwave. Can I take them down there anytime?
So electronics and appliances are typically handled on our cleanup day, which is open to all county residents, and it just occurred two weeks ago. I don't know at the Z Road, one that's held at Siobhan Township, whether they do it.
It happened two weeks ago. Cost me $45 to give it two TVs, a computer, and something else.
See, but I'm not that ecologically.
So you sort of find someone outside the road there?
I'm sure I'll find somebody who's.
There's another event, I think it's Celine, coming up with the County Water Resources Commissioner that they're sponsoring in Celine.
Obviously, the easier you make it for people unless you're going to send it. Is there, is there a possibility of placing a dumpster? Or is that just too ridiculous?
Typically, what happens with the e-waste and appliances is we'll bring in semis, pack it all, and a vendor will take it away. So we don't, dumpsters would go into a landfill for us, so.
Oh, like recycling?
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't get recycled. So when we, those are special arrangements that we have to make for the semis. We do our event, typically the third Saturday of May every year, but there are usually multiple events around the county that all county residents can go to.
The best thing about my life, I get a big five gallon tank of gas and kerosene and stuff like that, I did that for five years in my truck lot, waiting for it to blow up, but it did, and so I got rid of it, just take it and get rid of it, hand you can back it. It's great.
Well, not, I'm just thinking of it was a place that people could dispose of it when they leave their apartment, as opposed to throwing it into the city dumpsters, then maybe they would be more obligated to get rid of it in a more responsible way.
I believe the collection they do on Z Road, I think it's one Saturday a month, takes a lot of the items that you referenced.
Yeah. Well, honestly, I work on Saturday. I want to just throw a card and pick it up, you know, like they usually do it, you know. But like you said, there wasn't one Saturday. You were thinking of doing that, right? All right. Not yet, eh?
Well, thank you for coming to introduce yourself to us and good luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to communications. We have two communications in the back that are on the county meeting list and our side calendar. Any comments from the staff or council? Mr. Smith?
Just a note on the planning commission one. I know Michelle has heard a report. That's our joint council, planning commission meeting that night, too, which starts at six.
Thank you for that, all right. Paul?
The Gateway Initiative, the Big 400, that has taken hiatus, maybe permanently, but right now we're not meeting. They felt that the interest has started to wane and because of lack of some leadership, so you can take that off for now, you know, if it comes back.
Okay.
As under wastewater, we went down to the Grandview Commons project to review their new sanitary connections. How are they doing down there, everything?
Oh, all the art. Dan, I think we moved on to that.
I want to start with the ballgame. Everybody start.
Dan, you usually ask Dan how he is. And he says, yes, and he asks him.
Do you have any questions on my report?
You lost your brain.
Let's go, ready, question.
I'm just wondering how they're doing, because I have, I know that they have to do a bunch of connections so we can bring the paving down Baker to.
Right. They have, they've done their sewer connection on each end. They have cut, capped the water. They have cut and capped the sewer on Grand Street, so they're going to flow, fulfill the rest of that. They have laid their sewer from Grand and Baker back up Grand. I didn't get a chance to check into, with them today, but that was done Friday. So I believe right now all our connections are made. That's why we've got across from the gas station where you kind of go behind the old building, that asphalt spot there, that's where the new sewer connection is going to be. The water is already off into that alley, or whatever you want to call it there.
Right.
So, and then when they reconnect to the, the new water, they're going to be in the green belt at Grand and Baker, they won't be out on the road.
Okay.
And then when you drive by there, you'll see two patches. One is a new manhole where they're going to connect the sewer in.
Okay.
And then the other one that's in the middle of Grand, right before Baker, that's where they cut and cap the old sewer line.
So we should, they're all, they're all caught up?
They're, they're pretty much right now out of, out of our way for what we have to do on Baker Road.
And we're only going to go to Grand, right? When we pay it, we're not going to go to Main Street?
Just short of Grand. It's not in the Grand intersection.
Yeah. And I think we need to, as they progress with the project, we need to look at what kind of trucks and what they're going to have coming in and out of there, too. And me and Courtney have already talked about that, on where we're going to stop right now.
Right.
We don't have that all tore up.
We're not doing the actual Grand and Baker intersection. They'll stop just short of that.
And then when they're done playing around, we'll complete up the big, uh, Main Street, not Baker?
Eventually, yeah, as a future project.
Well, it's a Friday, that's where we're, we're all set with them cutting and capping up the end of Baker Road.
Jim?
On the wastewater, about halfway down, check manholes along the Aaron River during floodrest. What does MH stand for?
What we have is we've got a manhole on each side of the river that goes over to Aaron River Drive, which counts for shore and all the other buildings are, and they're pretty close to the river. So anytime that we have a rain event or anything, we want, we make sure that there's no infiltration, you know, getting into the two manholes. So we got one on Aaron River Drive, Aaron River Drive side, and we also have one, really it's right behind a DPW there, where the water station is. And the one, the one that's on the DPW side as far as Saw Grant, we know we're getting infiltration in that old manhole, so when we go in there and we jet and we clean and televise, the sewer that's going underneath Aaron River Drive there, we're also going to be looking at options for fixing that manhole, because they're pretty close to the river, especially when we, you know, we get a big rain.
Thank you. Other questions on Dan? Hold us clear, sir.
I have a couple of updates. We started drag sealing last Thursday. Then Friday, they're in Westridge on Thursday, and then Friday, they had a big garage sale event going on in Westridge, which switched them over to Aaron Farms. We did have an incident that I'm still trying to investigate to see if it was the actual crack sealers that drove into one of our residents' driveway, or if it was Cadillac that was doing some paving on the other side of the by dock. I still haven't, I'm trying, I was going to ask Sean maybe after the meeting, because I know one of the residents had noticed who had pulled in there. So I'm still trying to, trying to work through that. The damage?
The resident would be me.
Oh, hers.
I saw it.
Oh, did you?
I saw it firsthand. I can give you all the, all the damage.
Okay, so I don't know.
I didn't talk to Suzanne, because I'd already left the town, but.
Right.
My brother and the, the homeowner across the street did.
Well, I mean, for me, talking to Courtney, we're just, we would just want to resolve the issue, because I'm not really sure, and it's not anything that can't be done with a power washer in 20 minutes of time, I believe, because we had a similar situation a couple of years ago on Glacier, and we went in there with a power washer and no chemicals or anything, and just had a, so I'm hoping with your help, we can take care of that.
This poor driver, he, I don't know, he didn't know how to back up the truck with a small trailer or whatever, but he tried to make a simple, and he couldn't, he got the trailer and the truck, anyway, he, he went up and down the driveway seven times and beep, you know, and.
Well, you can see that from the picture.
Yeah.
There's a nice little decor, so, anyway, thank you for that.
Yeah, so it was definitely, definitely the crack sealers.
That's, that's perfect. At this point, the city is, we're going to go out there and we're going to take care of this and it'll be done with this, but. And my other update is Michael Andrews with the concrete is going to be starting tomorrow on Hudson Street. That's what I heard today, so I'm hoping tomorrow that we're up there doing sidewalks and the bump outs. And then he'll be calling for the rest of the mistakes to do the rest of the stuff that we have to up now. Great. Any other questions?
I read somewhere that there was a concrete failure on Hudson.
It was in my report as well, yeah. The Janus Hudson Dome are going to replace the concrete.
Was that the same guy as tomorrow or somebody else?
Different. We didn't want them getting into Baker Room until Dexter Avenue was open, so we're going to do that, all that stuff.
Do you guys have an update on Dexter Farm?
I didn't get a chance this morning to drive out there, but last Friday, they had completed everything from Z Road as far as the road, but they still got to follow up with driveways and bringing the other roads in and then doing the gravel on the shoulders. Last I heard, as of Friday, they were going to try to be completed this Thursday, but I'm guessing by the look at the weather, we're supposed to get a pretty good rain Wednesday and Thursday, so I imagine that's going to delay them a little bit.
Thank you.
I told you, I told you, I told you they were going to be done on time.
Well, they said they were going to be done by first, right?
Yeah, so I mean, it would be close, it's just the weather, but they can't.
Yeah, they've been doing, I mean, when the weather's been right, I mean, they've been doing a really good job, it's just that's what's really slowing them down, it looks nice, Joe.
Good. Thank you for that. Okay, move on. Thank you. Okay, next up is our community development manager. Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine. I'm council tonight.
That's important.
Excellent. Long time no talk to you. Okay, you've got my report in front of you, and as Mr. Smith said, you have your third and your, what I'm presuming will be your final joint meeting with the planning commission regarding the master plan update. You've gone over, you did your initial input, then you went over some goals and objectives, and this will be the final meeting to actually start to go from the goals and objectives to the strategies, those items that you want to work on, prioritize them, make sure those are the ones that are in your plan as your next steps to implement the plan. Special meeting of the planning commission happened on the 21st. We were looking at that potential test amendment to the Village Commercial District in regards to live work units. Planning commission is comfortable with the amendments that Carlisle Orpin and staff has drafted up, and so there will be a, excuse me, the public hearing will be held on June 18th. There's not going to be a ZDA meeting, so it worked well, and we had to do that because of the public notification requirements. Excuse me. I'd like to set up an ED preparedness committee meeting sometime within the next few weeks, so I'll be sending out an email to Donna, Sean, and Zach for dates for that, that we're done with our ED strategy. Again, we need to decide what are the, what are the items we want to start moving forward with on that. And then our 3045 Broad Street, you also got an email about it. The 3045 Broad Street Committee will meet on June 13th at the Dexter District Library. It's a couple hour meeting in preparation for the public workshop, which will happen two weeks to the day after that. That'll be June 27th. At the time of my memo, we didn't have, we hadn't confirmed the date, but it will be Wednesday, June 27th. It will be at the District Library in the big meeting room, and it will be from 6:00 to 8:00. I'm labeling it the big reveal. I'm optimistic that we're at that point. I'm hoping that also generates interest in people attending the meeting. Everyone that has been at the previous three meetings has been emailed about it. It's on the website, so tell your friends, tell your neighbors. I'll have cookies and milk. And, pardon me?
Chocolate.
I can bring some awesome chocolate. Any questions on these before I go into the verbal updates? Okay. Watchtower Comics, you may have noticed that there's paper on the windows. They are no longer operating, they're moving out of the space. I talked with the property owner, Matt Schuster, today, and so he's going to be looking for a new tenant. I'm having a meeting with the sheriff tomorrow regarding how to ticket an entity when they're not physically around to do that. The property at 2865 Baker, that's the one that's in the back adjacent to Grandview Commons, nobody lives there anymore, it's bank owned, the property's in pretty sad, sorry shape. We've sent out all the notices for due process, and there's been no contact and no, no mitigation of the public nuisance, so we're at the, we're at the ticket stage, and, and that's a little tricky when the person's not here, and once the ticket's issued, they have 10 days to kind of make the call, so we're going to just figure out how we do that properly and get it done. The, I'm not sure, I think it might be in your report, but I could be wrong. We found out that Dan Hoy will be closed at Baker Road the 7 a.m., I'm sorry, 7:00 PM, May 30th to 7:00 a.m.
That's all changed, which was.
Now it's changed?
Yeah.
Oh, wonderful. I was going to say, staff contacted every business in the industrial car.
No, it's not till June, no.
Now it's not till June? Okay, so we'll just send out a quick little update to them. Okay.
That was just on Friday, it changed.
Okay, well, see, things happen.
You always have to know.
Okay. The only other thing, staff and, and our intern went out today and did some, some inspections of properties today, because there, it's now about time that all the lawn should have been cut at least once, and so there's a few that we'll be sending out letters to, so working with the intern to help on that.
The auto parts that are there.
Yep.
When we put the new curb in, we took away the driveway. They have a sidewalk, but there's no, there's no lawn installed there.
I need to follow up with them to, because they have to put that lawn in.
They have, they have to.
They have to put that in, because that's an area that they had, that used to all be.
Asphalt.
Asphalt.
Correct.
Came all the way around to the front.
Correct.
And when they came in to do that repair to the front facade, we worked with them to take out all of that asphalt, put in the sidewalk down to the sidewalk, put a private sidewalk down to the public one, and then that area would all be lawn, so just have to follow up with them to get it finished.
Thank you.
And that's it, I don't have anything else.
Questions for Michelle?
I'm looking forward to seeing you on Monday.
There is a written report from our county sheriff. Are there any questions on that report? Always good when there's zero minutes of investigative follow-up by the detective bureau. Okay, we'll keep going. Don, the city manager report, I believe.
I don't have too many updates. Some of you may have seen that the road commission appointed Cheryl Settle to their director position, so she'll be replacing Roy Towne. The Dan Hoy closure will be, Dan Hoy and Baker will be closed, or Dan Hoy will be closed, I should say, at Baker on June 5th now, and Shield on June 4th, but that'll be in the overnight hours, 7:00 to 7:00 a.m. DTE's going to start working there at night to try to help with traffic when they have to do both closures, or main closures. One of the things, right when you were talking about those drop-off stations, when, in this update I had about meeting with Evan Pratt, County Water Resources, one of the things they were talking about with this regional solid base authority was kind of coordinating what and where and the how of the drop-off locations throughout the county, so to kind of standardize them and kind of bring them under one umbrella. So that is something that we talked about was, you know, with the e-waste and those different things. So I don't know if participating in that will be valuable as part of, being part of the authority, but it could be interesting just, you know, to attend the meetings and see kind of the direction that they're heading. Last meeting, Cole mentioned about taking the council meetings. Is that something that staff or the council wants staff to look into or to do? I mean, I don't know, until you guys provide direction on stuff like that, I don't, I wouldn't know if we're supposed to be doing it or not, so.
From a perspective, I think it's a good idea. I don't know what the cost would be, what we'd do, but I think anytime you get more information available with public opportunity would be beneficial, so I can come back with some kind of method of how we do that and cost. Please fill us out.
I just want to just make a few journey items. I have some, some designs that I got emailed on the roadabout, the middle of the roadabouts.
And you said, you got it and you got it under?
Did, yeah. I asked her on one if we wanted to put a sign what she thought the dimension should I'm assuming a sign of some sort would go on the Dan Hoy, Dan Hoy Baker one, instead of the Dunbar one, so, anyway, they're kind of cool. Supposed to be, you know, drought resistant, sort of self-sustaining plant life, if they don't have any irrigation.
Pretty hardy plants.
Yeah.
It's probably what we already have, and how, yeah, we definitely need a things that can survive. It'll all take some maintenance in the first few years, but, but anything we do is obviously there.
Questions?
All the questions for Courtney?
Under my report, I can think I just want to cover, try to cover, maybe Dan can help me. Dan, Patrick and I attended the Baker Road pre-construction meeting last Thursday at 1:00 at the road commission, and if you've been to a county road commission meeting, you know where they're leading off, the hall is right there on the first floor. They had that completely cleared out and it was full. They had tables set up, and there were people from utility companies everywhere, including the group that's working now there. I forget the exact order, but once DTE gas gets out of the way, DTE electric comes in, and apparently the key pole, using this as a example, the key pole is at the Dan Hoy, is at the Dan Hoy site, and it'll be on the west side, right over here somewhere.
Right over there.
Because there's a line that goes down Dan Hoy, there's a line that comes up Baker. And basically, the joke was made that once that thing's set.
That's it.
Everything else is getting set off of it, even if it's in the wrong spot. That was the joke. That was essentially the, the joke that was made, so.
And the argument that one that's on the corner now here, I'm assuming as I see that's coming in there somewhere.
Yeah, I don't have a complete report, but I wanted you to have a sort of an order and then, you know, there's many utilities that are on the Detroit Edison poles. There's AT&amp;T, there's Comcast, I'm using train names, there's whatever else. There's a lot of people in the room I didn't even know the name to.
The schools got to stop the names.
And the schools have their own stuff that has to be, that has to be brought in. So there's an order to the demolition slash installation from new, I think they even said there's one identified, unidentified cord, they don't know who it is, and the joke was made, well, as soon as you cut it, you'll figure it out.
Somebody will.
But, but then, then those old poles got to be yanked, supposedly the one, the last one off the pole is supposed to yank it, but I think Detroit Edison will be the catch-all for that. But it was, Matt McDonnell did a nice job with a lot of people in the room getting through the project, but you think you're going to continue to see a lot of utility work, and, let me think about the dates for a second. They originally were going to put the full closure up on June 18th, I think, and I think it's been moved up like five days to allow some of those utilities to work.
Without any impact.
Without any impact. The reason we didn't see any working today was there was a big track meet. They didn't want the workers that close, you know, they've been working in the field on the west side.
Oh, yeah.
So the reason there was zero, there was zero activity there today was a plan to let the kids and let the cars, let the parents be there without construction activity going on around them, without kind of safety perspective, that was the clear goal.
So the schools are going to be allowing the 12, 12 schools open?
Jerry was sitting at the table. He was right there involved and, and did not have any.
He's good with it?
He was good with it, so the world's all good if he's good, you know how that works. Well, until, until he's not.
Yes.
Until it's not, but anyway, that, that, they are, they are fairly on schedule, and this infrastructure, for infrastructure group is working very hard to get the gas stuff Anyway, I just want to give you guys a sense for the order. It'll be below ground stuff, then above ground, Detroit Edison and such. And there may be some concurrent activity going on, like our underground, we have sanitary sewers and water me and some of that stuff, but it's on track for the closure. But it's on track, for the closure to be somewhere around the 18th or a little before.
And open the 22nd, I think, of August.
Yeah, the target is to be open the 22nd of August, that's right.
I would bet on a calendar, right?
I would bet they'll use every day of that.
He writes that I'll be in Europe, and what would he care?
All right. Anyway, I wanna report on the meeting a little bit, since that's a big public project that we've been part of for a while, should be a big one. Does anybody have any questions for me on anything? I wanna also thank Ray for stepping in yesterday while I was on vacation with my family and...
That wasn't vacation.
It was excellent, excellent. You know, it's always tough to come back.
Everybody else was there, everybody did a nice job. Ray, Matt, Greg.
I'm sure he did.
Thank you. Senator Citywatt.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, can I keep going? Jason, you're gonna be late for your next meeting, buddy.
I wanted to hear about the roundabouts. I do them every day, so.
Gotcha.
You're the commissioner.
So we are down to consent agenda.
We approved the one item listed on consent agenda, building general in amount of $22,058 and $0.60.
Motion by Fisher. Second by Smith. Thank you both. All those in favor are approving the bills of payrolls. So can I just say hi, please?
Hi.
Those opposed? We have no old business, so we're now into new business. We have seven new business items. New business item L1 is consideration of extension of the predeveloped agreement with Norfolk. Ron Fisher?
Yeah.
Support. Second by Cousins. I believe it was for a period of five months, right?
When's the term? Three mil. I know it's extending it by five months, but I didn't know.
Michelle, when did the Norfolk agreement end?
Sorry about that, I'm too busy convincing over here. Sorry about that.
When did the Norfolk agreement end? When was the six-month off?
Uh, the six-month was, uh, in April. The specific date I can't, pardon. I don't remember the exact date.
This will fix it, that's right.
This will fix it.
Does that why we're going with five months?
That's what they requested.
Right, they requested a five month.
We're not in violation of our agreement.
Nope.
Nope.
Even though we only allow a 90-day sentence?
Correct. You have, you have the ability to determine how long you're going to. The agreement says 90 days, they've asked for five months, they've given you a schedule. They've demonstrated to the DEA satisfaction, the 30-45 Broad Street Commission Committee satisfaction, that they continue to move forward and that the, that both parties want to continue to work together.
No questions? So this, we're doing this similar to what we did before with the DEA, they recommended down somebody. Please call the vote.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Uh, new business item L2 is consideration of selection of investment managers.
I'll move the motion on the bottom of page 48.
Okay, move by Smith. Second by Fisher, thank you both. Before we discuss, I'll turn it over to Ray to move this.
Well, you've seen this issue or this item before when we went out, when I asked for it off the RFP. We got three quotes back. As I said in my memo, the one firm, although I, I won't about them as a firm, I'm not comfortable with putting all our eggs in that one basket, no matter how diverse that basket may be. And that's just a personal problem. I did discuss, or we did review the bids, all the members of the finance committee, Zach and Sean, did review the bids, as well as did the DEA treasurer. And I think there's pretty much consensus on the recommendation that's being made. The only thing I didn't have before was the contract itself. We can work out with them, you know, whether we wanna do it, as we said in the RFP, with the three-year commitment, or if we wanna do it with the 30-day, you know, like, perpetuating with a 30-day cancellation. Couldn't come up with the right word. But anyway, he's gonna be sending me the contract if, if you guys approve it tonight. And then I'll bring that back to you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So I'm on, uh, I'm on 48. So I'm reading about two remaining firms, and I'm trying to understand, I don't know what 10 basis points is, is that 10% of everything we've invested?
Point one percent.
Was that point, 10 basis points of them?
Yeah.
Then 65 basis points, that's what Morgan Stanley charged?
Mm-hmm, point six, 5%.
Okay, but then Meter has a minimum charge of minimum on four million investment under management.
Which means that, like, if you use the, the 10 basis points, the fee would be 4,000, but they have a minimum of 5. So it would be 5.
And that would be the annual charge?
Yes. But if, if, for instance, if we had $5 million, then their fee, you know, would be?
Five.
Yeah, right. At $3 million, it would still be 5.
And why is, do you wanna work at Stanley's annual fee, because it always has a minimum?
Right, yeah, they didn't, they didn't put a minimum there, but.
They're similar, but they're, I like that they, the one who chose helping Ohio State County.
I mean, Morgan Stanley is clearly a more well-known entity.
Right.
Being who they are. Everything with Meter checked out, that I looked at so far is checked out just fine.
Okay, so let's give Ray the direction, if you're able to go talk to them one bit early and bring this back to form. See, it's going to June, probably June 11th, I assume. If you can do it.
Oh, yeah, it'll be that quick.
Okay, good. Please call the vote.
Tell?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Thank you, partners.
Thank you for your work on that, Ray. Page 31, uh, L3 is consideration of First Street Park improvements. Yes, there's no recommended motion. Got Parks? Just presenting all of them.
Yes, Parks, Parks made a, a recommended motion, or made a recommendation at the bottom of the motion to council.
I move the vote level four based on the recommendation of Parks made.
Second.
By Zach, second by Fisher. Thank you both. Level four.
Justin, would you think realistically if we did adopt level four, that it would probably span two fiscal years?
At this point, I, I think so. I think the hardest part would be any moving of the pits. A lot of the things, I think we could, we could still get done this fiscal year, but that would be a major, major issue project.
I guess we just have to look at what the costs are and if we need to put in the extra. We just have to figure it out.
Right. So where are we moving the pits to?
So it was Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation to keep the current alignment of all of the pits, but to move any pits that we might have to move to be in line with kind of the second row, take from the first row and put it to the second row to keep the same orientation that they're in. There was discussion about reorienting the pits, to make it look more like the, the master plan.
Which is I made, yeah, correct, yeah.
Correct. And it was also the, the decision to make a recommendation that did not include that orientation, feeling that that orientation was not conducive to actually planting horseshoes up in the park.
And that's a question because of the sun?
Uh, because of the sun and towards the back currently, there's a significant drop-off. So in order to, to realign all of the pits, you'd have to fill in completely back towards the railroad tracks, which you, we would still have to do like the some in order to accommodate additional pits. But the, the orientation with the, the sun and the, the drop-off for the two major issues with a full reorientation.
It's 10 pits?
Uh, there are currently 12 pits on site. I believe there are three up front that would need to be reoriented.
I see where you've done that.
You can, you can kinda see it in the OHM section.
So Justin, where's the earthwork item that is in here?
Uh, so the earthwork item is to be on the northwest side of the property, closer to the point behind a dairy printing. It would be adding fill and then creating a slab to, to put the porta potty. And it would require some, some clearing of trees in that area as well.
Okay, so over near five and seven on the, on the, on the other plan?
Uh, correct. You, you, um, the next page on 98, you can see it, it's the, uh, the white square. That's it, in that area.
Right, but how far is it gonna go?
So where the, where the, where the, where the tree line is now, it would be removing 30 by 30 area of trees, adding fill, and then adding a concrete slab.
And 12 pits accommodates the ringer's club?
Yes. And actually, they, these, the representatives that attended Parks said that they would be okay with losing one or two sets of pits if, if that was necessary.
So what do we have budgeted for this year and then for next year?
There was $30,000 budgeted for this year.
And?
We didn't have anything budgeted for next year at this point.
Has any money been spent from this year's budget?
I think we're strictly funding $500s.
Yeah, for the table reimbursement.
Yeah.
Okay, any comments from council members? Please call the vote.
Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. So motion carries, six to one. New business item L4, consideration of RAS pump up here.
I'm gonna approve a $7,500 for Canadian Industries to rebuild one pump in July of this year.
Motion by Michelle's, support by, second by Knight.
Be clear that's not, not to exceed, because it's actually a couple hundred under that.
Not to exceed $11,500.
Yep.
Got that in the motion. So we have a vote for a second. Dan, anything to add here?
We have two RAS pumps, they've done yours since 2000. We're wasting a lot of water with these seals being gone, that we wouldn't necessarily have to do, so make this your player, or make this your pair should help that out considerably. Like it says in the memo, we looked at F and D to see if these are gonna be replaced, but they're not driven, so.
Okay, please call the vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you for your work on that. New business item L5, consideration of Central Street border, border trail landscaping. Wow.
I'll move rewarding the contract to paper landscape screening. To, oh, I actually got two listed on there. The papers, the ones we hit all last time. And amount not to exceed 17,725, information presented by staff.
Motion by Michelle's?
I'll second.
Second by Fisher, thank you both.
It's Haffner.
Haffner. Discussion, Michelle, anything to add?
Um, nothing more than what's in the memo. Council did ask for additional bids so that you could have a comparison. I sent it out to Todd Services, Lotus Gardens Scapes, which was formerly owned, and L and J Lawn Care. Both Lotus Gardens Scapes and L and J Landscaper declined the bid, and Todd's did provide one, and that was the one that was 25,000. They're apples-to-apples comparison, so they, you'd be really, you'd have a good foundation and it wouldn't be playing a guessing game, so.
Can I assume that Superior has signed the whole part list, or?
Um, they have because they're our contractor already, or they're street trees.
I just didn't say that yourself.
The trees look pretty good. The trees they planted look pretty good.
Mr. Cousins, sorry.
Sorry. I don't see any water bags listed here. Do we have water bags that are planned?
Our, our DPW has water bags and they will put them on the trees.
Put those on the trees themselves?
Just like we do for the trees that get planted in the street trees.
I need a minute.
Yes. Yes, I was actually out today and one of the homeowners that got a new tree and his coach was right there and was tripping watering. They're doing what they were supposed to? I just hope West Ridge is doing theirs.
Doing what?
Just hope West Ridge is doing theirs.
Say it again, I missed what.
Watering your trees.
West Ridge watering their trees, because they bought 22 street trees.
Yeah, I have no idea, I haven't looked at it since I've been home. I saw them go in though.
Yes.
Is, on the, just type of question on the Todd's? Quote, there is a description of the area of work that they provided.
Right.
Like five feet wide, 140 feet long, 90 yards of mulch, blah, blah, blah. Is that the same as what is on the other one? Because I don't see dimensions, I saw it on, on the apples-to-apples exactly.
So you've got both of them, so.
And I know we saw the, we saw the picture last time, Michelle. I'm not, I'm just trying to.
I'm trying to remember the dimensions, and I apologize, I shouldn't have kept, I shouldn't have kept that map in there for you. To the best of my knowledge, based on the way I remember looking at this, they're the same thing. They've just clarified the dimensions on those planting areas.
Other questions? Okay, please call the vote to accept the bid from Superior Lawn Care Snowfall for the Haffner property, not to exceed 17,725 as shown in our reports. Bottom one, page 117.
Knight?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I made a comment that, I was there, there today, I noticed that.
I made a comment that, I was there today, I noticed that my request for plantings along the border to border trail, I invited God to somebody because there's a lot of cotton woods that are starting to spring up along the edge of the fence there between the border to border trail and the railroad tracks right now. And I think in years, you're going to find a lot of little trees along there that'll provide a nice green space. If not, somebody planted it first. Somebody did that.
Okay. New business item, L6, discussion of youth representatives on board.
So this item was discussed as part of council goals and objectives, and gathered some topics for discussion so that way we could get a little bit of direction in how you'd like us to proceed with this. Questions that have been posed, and some general thoughts from staff. We just wanted to kind of get your feedback and get some general direction on how you'd like us to proceed.
Is council ready to provide guidance or wait for another meeting? Is okay not to have comments?
No problem. I think it'd be valuable thing to have youth representative on all our committees. It would be nice to get feedback from them to see if they're ready for it, if it's something that's maybe a bit too frightening, or to get the couple that are most eager started ahead of the others. I think it would be pretty tricky to make them as a voting member. Planning Commission, you can have a non-elector sitting on it, but it gets tricky to do. And I think having a say at the table will be very valuable in and of itself. And because of the number of activities kids are doing these days, it probably would be good to have like a primary and an alternative, because when the sports season hits, they're gone, no matter how diligent they are. But those are my feelings. Oh, and I think the way we approach of having it as an additional number to your bodies is probably most beneficial for the least amount of cost, because separate youth committee could perhaps tackle issues especially interested to that group. It requires more staff time in getting a room another day and all those things that are probably a bit much to do right now.
That's my concern, is who is the supervisor and what's the measurement of is it working or not working? We kind of, is something we're giving this another charge for staff or how does that work? Be one of my questions.
I think that was why we kind of gravitated more towards putting somebody on existing board as opposed to having a separate board.
Then you just have one more to copy at the port.
Pardon?
Then you just have one more copy at the port.
Oh, okay.
Just from my research, a lot of communities do a youth rep to city council, less so to other boards.
Elm Park did the other, doesn't have one to council, do they have one on the other committees?
Who is?
Elm Park. And over the years, it's been, it kind of depends on a somewhat sort of champion and getting the kids. So about three years ago, it was a big push and they put all these kids on all these committees. So we had on our street fair committee, but they added like five. One of them ended up actually coming and she's actually a full-fledged member of that commission now after she turned 18, so it didn't work out in the end. But, yeah, it was.
So that.
You just had to find something that that kid is interested in, because Isabel, for example, was into websites and stuff, so she does that for the committee, so it was something she was interested in.
So in going through kind of the managerial forums, one of the things that was brought up was it was difficult to keep interest and keep consistency from the youth reps who were appointed. And it really isn't a matter of getting the right person on the right board committee.
That's likely something that works best as an annual appointment as opposed to a longer term.
Well, then you could, yeah, then you could have more participation too. So we're thinking ACH, Parks, Tree Garden Planning? So, well, those four?
Maybe we should ask.
Say again, twice?
Well, I'm just focusing on bullet number one under number one, Paul.
Right.
Are we thinking we would have a youth representative, or the idea of offering a position for a youth representative, non-voter, to participate with those four boards?
Is there any non-contact for the boards and asking for their input?
Probably is. How would you handle when the, if the boards happen to be unsworthy, the members get compensated?
They wouldn't be a voting member, so like, you don't have to worry about that.
That'd be able to clarify.
Does not, does not the school board have a representative that sits at the table right now?
They do, but they're also not voting.
They're not voting, but they sit right at the table. They're not in any of the other committees, but they are at the council meeting.
Right.
At the school board meeting.
Right.
So we were, your question was, we have for these various groups, but not the city council?
Well, I think that this is consistent with what we talked about under the goals and objectives, was that we would step into the process of getting youth involved on those four boards.
I don't have a problem with it, I think though that you're going to find out that that you will have better participation if you have it at the council meeting than you will on these meetings, but that's just my opinion. I think people, I think they want to be involved at a level where decisions are made at the final, not halfway through it, but we'll see how it works out. This is the decision. My, you guys, we had that discussion, but.
Yeah.
It was fairly quick. It took us a long time, I just had to talk about it a little bit more at this point.
Well, if we were going to do this, it looks like we'd have to make some updates to the respective.
Right.
Well, if they're not voting, I don't know why we couldn't just do it by resolution for all of them.
Okay.
I mean, I think you'd have to probably do it by ordinance if it was going to be a voting number. You're not really changing.
Yeah, I mean, doing it by ordinance makes it an official, I mean, an official number of like planning and parks.
Right, I'm just wondering how much of it we really need to endure.
We may not.
Implement this idea, you know.
We may not need to. Especially, that's why I'm saying.
If they're not.
Trial, you know, see how it works.
And then if it's done, then we don't have to take it out of the ordinance, you know, so we could just try by resolution for a year and see.
And Don brought up about just, you know, having the committees, boards discuss it. I'd like to see, you know, Planning Commission have an opportunity. Yeah, so let's ask, let's ask for feedback out there. Doesn't accept, does that sound good? We can do that. Because we already have nine. Yep. And you start adding to that.
I figured you'd love it.
Yep.
Well, right, but they're not going to be voting.
They're not, right.
And ACH has a lot of.
But I mean, the kid's going to have to just conform, I mean, when the meeting schedule is, you know, we're not going to change the meeting schedule more than, so you don't know when it is and if they can do it.
Right. Okay, well, it's good feedback from those four boards on the idea.
Can we also, at the same time, talk to, I mean, would we, how do you imagine doing this, I guess? Putting it out on the email update, Facebook and the website, talking to the schools?
I think you had to go to the schools and go to the.
The board?
Yeah, go to the board, well, you got to the board first, but I think you had to go to the schools and ask various members of the various clubs, because that's where you're going to get most of your participation, I think, but it's convenient, but yeah, you have a club.
Well, I think the student council.
Student council, the honor society, all the other, you know, you'll have some that are there that will participate, I would hope.
Probably wouldn't see much action on any of it right now until fall.
Yeah, possible.
Your council, your councils may be another source.
I guess we could talk to the schools about how they think it would be best to have a private, in the meantime.
Okay, let's get that initial feedback from the boards and the schools. I assume we're not limiting it to a city resident. Well, just provide some opportunity for anybody in the district to get some experience in setting like that, right?
You say not limited to a city resident?
I'm assuming we're not, for, I mean, a lot of these boards have people that are outside the city, anyway. So I'm just, right, by going through the schools, we're not just saying, school, the students that live in the city, we're talking about an interested person that's looking for a little experience and seeing how at least one development works.
My observations have been that people define Dexter by the school district boundaries.
Yeah, I think that's the right call, I'm just making sure, that's all I'm saying.
Now, if there were two equally qualified folks in one from the city and one not, I'd probably prefer the one from the city, but if there's a qualified person who's interested in able, they've got as much interest in making a good life in downtown as all the folks who.
This is going to be an application process?
That's where we're going to talk to the schools, we'll try to figure out, you know, how much time to advertise and then have kids submit applications.
Matching people.
Right. And we have to say, we're getting application for, which is a lot of use.
Can I offer some information? I know I'm not, I'm out of order.
Sure.
Pinkney High School a few years ago did something similar. The school, the kids from the school went to the village Putnam Township in Hamburg to form a youth council, and they, I don't know where it ended up at, but they did approve it by resolution, so I don't know if maybe contacting Pinkney Schools may help on how they went about doing it. But they had student representatives from each of the municipalities.
Thank you for sharing. Okay, does staff have enough direction for the next short term?
Thank you.
All right, thanks for helping us bring that forward. Last business item, L7, consideration of budget amendment for attorney fees. So, moved by Smith, support. Second by Cousins. Any discussion in the meeting or next thing? Players, get the charts there. Okay, please call, please call the vote.
Cousins?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Tell? Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Motion carries, council comments this evening, starting with Mr. Michelle's if you're ready.
All right, CAPDARs meeting this month is going to be on June 27th. That's when we're having the big reveal, so probably won't be a lot of folks here, but they're going to get some folks from the RTA, the Regional Transit Authority, to come out and get feedback from the side of the county. And July 25th meeting, we're going to get a bunch of folks who actually develop housing and other types of projects to come and speak to us, so we can get the perspective that they've got. And I'm going to throw some spaghetti out there for the parks, either staff or the Parks Committee. It seems like we could, in the future, perhaps as part of the extension project there, do a better job of connecting the sidewalk on the, well, if you're heading out of town on the left-hand side, the sidewalk there to the ramp that snakes around, there's a spot where people are just walking through the grass right now to get down there, and it seems like we might be able to do it better, either with sidewalks, which wouldn't be handicap accessible, but they can go around the other way.
I know where it is, I know where.
Okay, if you're coming from the American Legion?
Yes.
Into downtown, you cross the bridge, you turn right through the pole, and a bunch of people are walking down to the hill. And that's it, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Knight?
I have nothing.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Jones?
I was just going to lynch it to Ray. Just put your stuff out early enough in the morning, somebody will collect it before the trash man gets there.
Yeah.
That's what I said, things are gone before the big garbage pickup, it was. I took a, we have, yes.
Mr. Fisher?
I have nothing.
Mr. Cousins?
No.
Okay, we're back around and not arranged. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak this evening? We do have a closed session scheduled to discuss pending litigation and the purpose of property of course, under L15.268, section eight. The pending litigation of DAPCO Industries versus City of Denver.
I will be going to that session for that purpose.
Okay. Moved to by Fisher at 8:09 or something like that.
8:07.
Second by Knight? Call the vote to go in and clear the room, please.
Knight?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Smith? Cousins?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.